We won't be live on TV tonight. And we're now live on Facebook. That's all our channels.
All right, guys, at this time, I'll call to order Galton City Council work session. This is electronic meeting. So we'll begin the meeting with a ready reading of the governor's orders. After which we will vote on that. And at the same time, we'll ask Connie Kitchell for the roll call. So pursuant to Governor Lee's executive order number sixteen. It's equivalent orders and the need to limit the community spread of COVID nineteen. The February ninth, two thousand twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, Galton City Council meeting. Will be held by electronic means. Meeting will be live stream protected public health, safety and welfare of the council and the city citizens of Galton. You can join this meeting. Need to dial. Four seven oh, two five oh, nine three five eight, or four seven oh, three eight one, two five five two. And enter webinar ID number eight four three, nine oh, six oh, four four, four six. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Kitchell if we'll. Call a roll call. So you need to vote yes or no on this order right here to call the meeting. And then vote your, if you're present or absent. Ms. Kitchell?
I need it. I know. I think Ms. Love made the motion, but I didn't hear the second.
Second by Councilman Overton. All in favor? Say ah.
I'm not a caller.
We're going to do the roll call.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Here and yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes, and here.
Councilman Fan?
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George?
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes, and here.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes, and present.
The electronic meeting passed seven to zero and we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next is approval amendments of January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Most approved.
My second. Second by Councilwoman Love. Is there any changes need to be done? See none? All in favor? Roll call vote. Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, before we move down to public recognition, I'd like to state that. Items eight, nine, and ten have been deferred at the request of the pop, the property owner. So if you're willing, wanting to make a comment under public recognition on these items right here. That has been deferred and I'm sure you'll be given another chance to make the comments that you want to make.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes, ma'am.
May I interrupt? We made a vote to allow that defer on Ms. Hamacali. Do you think that that's appropriate?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with items eight, nine, and ten deferred. Do I have a motion?
I know. What should we do?
Motion by, motion by Councilwoman Eileen George and second by Councilman Overton. Is there anybody else like to add to or take away anything else off this agenda or any discussion?
Sean, you might just let everybody know the general public. That's got to do with the Twin Eagle subdivision. So the, the Twin Eagle subdivision has been delayed.
Okay, Jimmy, I think you've been deferred. I do. Thank you. So Ms. Kitchell, you do a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yeah.
The vote is seven to zero.
Okay, so we got the agenda approved. So now we're going to move down to public recognition. I'd like to ask the mayor. Mayor, would you keep up with the minutes, please?
Time, yes, absolutely.
I'd like to say to the public, please try to keep your, there's a lot of people who like to speak tonight, try to keep your. Comments to five minutes and try not to be redundant or reciprocative in your comments. We'll ask you that. At this time, Jeff Hinchell. Do we have some people that would like to speak to a public, I mean, to agenda-related items only?
Yes, sir. And just a reminder, if you're using your cell phone, you will raise your hand by doing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. For those who are using the app or your computer, please use the raise your hand function. You'll simply mouse over. The bottom of your screen and you'll see that button to raise your hand and I'll call out your name and then you'll have an opportunity to speak. We do have someone who's raised their hand, Michelle and Pascal. Go ahead.
Good evening, Pascal, Jervens, one three three five Long Island Pike. On January twenty-eighth, I sent an email to the mayor requesting that free subject. Got added to the council committee tonight. And on January third. She responded, thanks for your suggestion. That's not a suggestion, that's a right. Per the chapter of the city, section two, seventy-one, Charlie, C. So I'm wondering why. The, what I asked to be put on the agenda tonight is not on the agenda. That's my citizen right, so why is not there? That's all. Thank you.
Okay, and looking over other attendees, I don't see anyone that's raised their hand. Just making sure no panelists. Last call, if anyone would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function.
This is on. Goat farm. We've got a lot there. We've got some on the Bowles Farm. We've got some on the Bob Goodall properties. So we don't have nobody else, Mr. Hinchell?
And Vice Mayor Fennell, this is for agenda and non-agenda related items.
So we're going to have public, we're going to have public. Comments underneath the ordinance on number one?
No.
No.
No, she, she was just reiterating that this is for all public comment, both related and non-agenda related. And I would suggest that Mr. Hinchell, again, give a reminder to people how to indicate. How to indicate that they'd wish to speak if they are on the telephone, because there are some phone numbers that have called in and.
I was just, I was just trying to remind the public. I figured we'd have more comments than just one out there.
Sure, sure. Just to remind everyone, especially those on the telephone, to use, to raise your hand to speak. You will hit star nine and then we'll call out your name and you'll hit star six to unmute yourself. For everyone else, you'll look out for the raise your hand function by mousing over the bottom of your screen or you'll see that button on your app. And now is the time to do that. If you'd like to speak. And I don't see anyone else who's indicated they'd like to speak.
Okay, at this time, we're going to close public recognition. Next, moving along, mayor's comments.
So with the long agenda that we have this evening, I think you'll be glad not to hear anything from me. Just be well, everyone. I will remind you that at the end of February, the governor's allowance for. Virtual meetings is set to expire. Whether or not they will extend that, I don't know, but just so that that is on your radar. That's all.
Okay. All right, let's go to the regular agenda. Item number one, Bill McCord. Are you ready, Bill?
Yes, sir. I certainly am. Let me get my share screen ready here and I'll move right into, I have number one. Okay, I want to confirm whether everyone can see that.
Yes.
Great. All right, I'm going to move to the slideshow screen. Okay. Our first item tonight is a request for rezoning of property on the extreme west side of the city. It is property that is currently zoned R twenty low-density residential. And the applicant is, and parts of it are zoned MU mixed-use. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property with, which is within the city limits. Of Galton. And I want to clarify, because there may be some confusion as to what property we're actually talking about. The property we're discussing is this area outlined in yellow and with the hatch mark or the screen look overlaying it. So it's adjacent to highway thirty-one east of Chutes Lane and again, on the extreme west end of the, of the city. This show, this slide shows the city limit boundary is the red line. Nashville Pike is. On the north side of the property and the southern portion of the property, which is not subject to this rezoning request, but will be. Reviewed by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners for consideration of a zoning change is not part of this request. So. I want you to kind of, even though you, a lot of the materials you're going to see tonight. Show improvements that they anticipate being presented to Sumner County for consideration. I want you to kind of keep that. Apart from your decision and your discussion here tonight, other than some of the things that are related to that. Property such as interconnectivity and things. So this property again is just under seventeen acres. And it's commonly known as the goat farm. And the reason that I guess it's goat farm is that some years ago, there were a lot of goats on the farm. So. It's not currently used as a farm now other than it's vacant land. So the applicant requests to rezone the property from R twenty and MU to. PGC Plan General Commercial and MRO with a master development plan for what's called the goat farm. This property again is located halfway between Galton and Hendersonville, but in the city limits of Galton. The zoning's on the property now, as you can see here on the left side of the screen, show is R twenty for the most part and a little bit is MU. It's adjacent to the Hunt Club apartment complex and the south portion of the goat farm. The city of Hendersonville is on the west side across Chutes Lane and again, Galton. Includes the properties on the north side of Nashville Pike and Hendersonville is located. The Hunt Club, Phase of Hunt Club, single-family residential development is to the south and east of this property. The applicant looks to develop this property with the rezoning with the master development plan. On the right side of your screen shows that area in kind of a pinkish overlay color with a. Site plan that will be not MRO but PGC zoning and the area in the orange there is targeted for MRO zoning. The area in the light blue to the south is not in the city. That will be reviewed by the county. This master development plan is a mixed-use development, which will have. Commercial development, primarily restaurants, office space. And general retail with an outdoor activity center and a large hotel, four-story hotel on the PGC zone properties. And including that part of that property would be the property that's adjacent to the Strawberry Mansion, just to the west of that. The southeastern portion of the, of the portion in the city would be zoned MRO and would include multifamily residential development. The. Give my notes here real quick so I can hit the highlights. The applicant is requesting a couple of minor. Exceptions and these were also reviewed by the planning commission. The minor exceptions are for building setbacks primarily for the hotel, because the hotel would be very close to the city limit boundary. And because of that, they're asking for an exception on there. The remainder of the yard of the hotel and the parking area, most parking area for the hotel would be on that portion that the county will be considering. They're also asking for an exception for front yard building setbacks along the interior streets for the multifamily development. They also provide a series of public roads that will traverse through the property. And public sidewalks that will extend along these roadways and Nashville Pike. They will be requesting. An alternative pedestrian plan because of some grade changes and the location of. The Nashville Pike Chutes Lane and the Veterans Memorial Parkway configuration. But their alternative plan would allow for continuous pedestrian movement along highway thirty-one using interior streets and. A pedestrian easement adjacent to Nashville Pike. This drawing shows you a little better of their circulation. They would have two road streets connecting to Nashville Pike. One may be signalized and that would be. Addressed at each FMDP, but most likely it would be to the easterly portion because that is the. What would be needed for signal separation from the existing signal at Chutes Lane. There would also be interconnectivity to the rest of the property to the south and to Chutes Lane. This is a pedestrian circulation which is consistent with the streets that they'd be building. Whoop, excuse me. A substantial portion of the property be left as open space. There's some small creeks that run through the property with some steep slopes and those would be reserved for. Both their natural vegetation and protection of those slopes and for stormwater. And there'd be a small open, common area, open space for community activities in the central commercial area. The Plan General Commercial would be comprised of a variety of things like restaurants and retail, commercial. These are typical. Architectural styles that would be provided for in this area. And this would be in support of some of the athletic facilities occurring off-site. More examples of what some of these restaurants and entertainment areas would look like. The hotel would be typically what you see here and what they is trendy here, I guess, in the. For suburban type hotel, it'd be four stories. They're asking for an height exception on the hotel for a maximum height of sixty feet. It'd be a four-story hotel. The multifamily would consist of. Buildings as high as three stories and these would be built up closer to the road. These would be more of your neo-traditional. Apartment-type complexes as opposed to your garden-style complexes. The parking would all be behind the street. So everything would be oriented to the street. These would be adjacent to the Hunt Club apartments. Seventy-six of these units would be in the city of Galton and they're proposing a few other units in the Sumner County portion of the property. I don't want to get into the off-site improvements, but they are working with the county to develop that portion of the property. Now. I mentioned the size of the hotel is four stories. It's by far the largest building on the property, but it is centrally located. In the property, so it's well far setback from any existing properties in the city or any residential properties. And it's closer to highway thirty-one. Most of the buildings in the commercial property would be, consist, other than the hotel, would be five to seven thousand square feet. To be able to accommodate small retail and the restaurants. The planning commission did review this at their last meeting in January and recommended approval of this zoning change with master development plan.
Bill, what was the vote that come off a planning mission for this property?
I believe it was unanimous.
Okay, did it meet all staff comments?
Yes, there are a few staff comments. They're minor and they're related to those exceptions that I mentioned earlier. Those are included in your agenda package in the, excuse me, the draft ordinance. And. If you want me to, I can specify what those are again.
Jimmy, did you have a question for Mr. McCord?
Yes, there are representative, is there, is there a representative from the developer online with us? I'd like to ask him a question.
Jeff, do we have a representative for this development?
Is, might be Kevin Kane has raised his hand or John Sexton?
John Sexton is a representative there.
Okay. You can unmute yourself there, Mr. Sexton.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Please unmute Mr. Kane also.
Done.
Mr. Sexton, my understanding is that, that they're going to put condos on this development and not apartments. Is that correct?
Sir, we're still working through that with the owner. Kevin might be able to further explain that, but our intentions, intentions right now are to. Try to push for the owner occupied versus the lease agreement units. Kevin, do you want to further explain that, sir?
Yeah, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, after talking with some of the community members at the neighborhood meeting last week and also some of the comments from council and staff, we. We are going to make those condos and not multifamily apartments. That is correct.
Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, because that would depend on how I would vote. So thank you for that.
Me too.
Could I ask a question, Sean?
Yes.
Where is, Mr. McCord, where is the school Jack Hands located in this?
Right across the street.
Here, this is the school right here where I'm circling with my arrow and it's south, south and south or southwest.
Okay.
Let me, let me ask a question to, to either Kevin Kane or John Sexton. The road right there. What's the name of that road? Chutes Lane?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to do any improvements to that road right there along with this development? Is it going to be able to handle all this additional traffic?
I can allude to that, Councilman. So we, we are in the second stage of the warrant analysis for Chute Lane. So we are looking at the national intersections that we're proposing as well as all of Chute Lane to. Make sure that what we're proposing will be able to handle on Chute Lane and all the connections that we are proposing. Yes, sir.
Okay, council, any more questions right here?
Sean, I think it's, I think, I know we had talked about it, but I know the, in the county part of it, we're talking about putting spy strength. This is a, this is actually a, an exciting. An exciting proposal and I think it'd be really beneficial to us and I appreciate. The developers agreeing to put condominiums in there and stuff instead of apartments. So. With that said, I'll make a motion to move it on the council.
I second that.
We got a motion for, by Councilman Overton. We got a second by Councilman John D. Alexander. Now open it up for discussion. We got any discussion on this right here?
I've got one more question.
I got a question, if you don't mind.
Okay, Linda Love first and then Craig Hayes.
I should have asked this the other day and maybe I did in the planning commission meeting, but Bill, are those homes in the Hunt Club at all adjacent to the land? Of this rezoning that's in the Galton Park?
The only part that's adjacent to the city of Galton that's part of this project is the extreme corner there where I'm showing the arrow. Can you see that on the screen? So that is where the rezoning and their master plan is adjacent to the single-family residential part of the Hunt Club. Just this one corner right here.
Okay, great. I know that the property owners would like to have more.
Buffering.
Yeah, more buffering there, but it sounds like that's a county decision. And I just wanted to tell the owner, thank you too for listening and changing that over to condos.
Councilwoman Love, may I respond?
Yes.
We were also taken into consideration from our meeting that we had last week, or I believe it was last, well, the week before. About those condo units that are our south of the county line and also the buffering. And, you know, we've heard the residents loud and clear and the owner has agreed. Along with working with Sumner County Planning to also remove those, those condos that we were planning on the Sumner County side too. So. You know, we are, we're trying our best to, you know, listen to, you know, the, the residents of the area to, you know, apply changes to the plans. So. We're doing our best and we're open to any, you know, suggestions to make this, you know, a true asset for the county.
We appreciate that.
I have a question.
Wait a minute, we got Councilman Hayes in the queue first, then we'll come to you, Ms. Eileen.
And this might not be the right time to ask this question, but are we going to be involved in any of the financing for this ice rink and everything like that, such as a TIF or anything, the city of Galton?
John, do you want me to tackle that?
Yes, sir.
So the, the plan is, and without diving too deep into the weeds, yes, we would be looking to do something called a conduit TIF. The property owner, this, I'm sorry, this is Kevin Kane speaking with Strass Development. The, the property owner and our partner Randy Smith. Really, the objective of the project from the outset was to bring kind of community assets together to create this amenity. Within the county and also the neighboring cities. So what we're looking to do is create something called a conduit TIF. By which the development and its partners would be financing the construction of the facility. And a TIF would be applied only to the revenue that we're generating through the, through the development. To pay back sort of the cost of construction. So it would be off of the county and the city's books. But we would be looking to recoup that over an extended period of time, say thirty years. In addition to partnerships with the Predators, we're kind of in the late stages of those negotiations and moving forward. But to give you a very long answer to a simple question, yes.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is it something that y'all, do you have figures on what it's going to cost for the facility, what we're going to have to put up, what we're going to have to do and everything like that? Or is this a little too soon to be asking that?
So there would be no ask from us to the city or the counties. We would be fronting the money. That would be on the developments books. We would only be seeking to recoup the money through the, through the revenue generated by the surrounding developments.
And if I might interject, Councilman Hayes. Again, there would be no indebtedness taken on by any public entity. That's, needs to be made very clear upfront. And the TIF, which is the increment financing, would actually. Never reduce anything that we're getting off of the property at this point in time. And in fact, any. Any debt that we have now, any debt service that we have now would also be financed through that. Increment financing. So there would be no diminishing of anything we have. In fact, there will be an increase in revenue to the city.
But, but Mr. Fenton, I'm sorry, may I interject?
Miss George.
Mr. Fenton, Mr. Kane, would you explain when you say revenues realized from the property would. Finance, or not finance, but repay the debt on the borrowing of the, of the developers. Is that just property tax or is that including sales tax and, and in the case of the hotel, the occupancy tax, et cetera? I think it's fair to address that.
Good question. That would only be property tax.
James, if I can add on to that, we would be seeking a state sales tax legislature for only the inside of the ICE facility. So. Any commercial. Development around the ICE facility, we would not be seeking any of the sales tax abatement from that. Only specifically when, within the ICE center, but we will not be asking for any hotel motel or lodging taxes.
So all of the, all of the sales tax from the restaurants, the entertainment center and the hotel would continue to flow to the city of Galton, correct?
If it's, if it's developed, right?
When it's developed, yes.
When, yeah, that's, that's when. That could be a big question right there. When it's developed?
And I think that's a, a good, a good question. Mr. Kane, would you explain your phasing on this?
Wait, wait, wait a minute, Mr. Fenton. I want to, I want to back up just one second. Ms. Eileen's been trying to get in the queue and we've been jumping ahead of her.
Okay.
Okay, okay, my question would be to Bill. And could you go back to the space that you were, where you said the connection was to the, yes, is that going to be further up? Yes. Is that going to be coming from the Hunt Club and is that a road that will directly connect the Hunt Club to that area?
That's the city limits line right there.
This dotted line is the city limit boundary. So anything that occurs south of this line would have to be approved by the county.
Okay, so is, so we don't know if there will be a road going in from the Hunt Club into the development?
Well, it's down in the county part, right, Bill?
That would be for the county to decide, but this, this drawing does show a street connection.
Okay, so that's in the county. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
All right. This is, I'm sorry, you're next.
That's okay, that's okay. I think the, again, the, the important parts are that, as Mr. Kane expressed. Sales tax, hotel motel, all that from the top. sales tax, hotel motel, all that from the top portion goes directly there. And the property tax increase in that TIF, we have to realize by state statute, any indebtedness by the city or the county has to be accounted for in that. So, uh, the entire increment won't go towards paying off this private investment. Just that part that doesn't include city indebtedness. So it comes out a new positive, even though it's a TIF.
Okay, Mr. Fenton, I think the Councilman Steve Fan, would you, would you want me to add something?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Uh, the first one is, uh, we're changing the apartments to condos. Uh, will the design change and how many square feet would you say approximately condos would be?
Uh, this is Kevin Kane speaking. Um, so we haven't quite studied sizes yet with that being a relatively recent change. My estimation would, they would be largely two bedroom units that kind of are flexed between, you know, different ages and groups within the community. So I don't have a real solid answer, but that would be my best guess at this point in time.
Okay, the other question you have, has anyone done a projection of the revenue for the city? This is completed.
I do have that, but you might need to bear with me for a few minutes while I, while I pull it up. Uh, in the meantime, while I'm pulling that up, I want to go back to the question that Councilman Hayes had regarding the phasing. Um, and, and make it clear that our objective here is to develop the ICE Center first. And that is the amenity that we're looking to bring to the community. And with that would be the hotels first to service the ICE facility and bear with me, I'm trying to find that spreadsheet. Um, and so that's sort of the goal there.
You said hotels. Are we talking about hotels or hotel?
Singular.
Okay.
Yeah, the hotel that's shown on that site plan is, is what I'm speaking to.
And to add to that, you know, all the infrastructure, all the utilities, underground utilities, roadways would be going in first. Um, and when those are set in stone, that's when the ICE Center comes online directly after that.
John, one thing I would like to ask you, uh, as far as the city goes, it'd be underground utility sidewalks and a large amount of buffering. Will the county continue, do you think, with the same type of, uh, utilities and restrictions that we have in the city for this property?
Yes, sir. So we've been working with the county on that and they're going to follow the more stringent uh, zoning resolutions and codes. So, um, we have been working directly with planning engineer emergency services to make sure that everything's continuous through the whole development. Yes, sir.
And how many units did you say will be in the town home, the proportion that's actually in the city?
In that multifamily configuration that we have shown right now, sir, it's about 76 units. And then so that's going to be a mixture of, you know, one, two and three bedrooms. As Kevin was stating, I would assume that most of those are going to be the two bedrooms, but those are based on uh, past examples that we have seen and actually designed. So 76 units, sir.
So, and, and you did, I'm clarifying that you did say the county portion of the town homes, you were eliminating those, correct?
That is correct, sir. And we're also studying the Von Road connection with the planning and engineering department on that. So, you know, we are looking at that whole intersection to make sure it's the, the best plan forward.
Is these townhomes, will they have any type of amenities with them?
Um, right now we're showing kind of a amenity deck with a pool and there could be some indoor recreation as well. Um, there are options within that zoning classification to potentially have, you know, some small businesses on the bottom floor as well too. So we're looking at all that. Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is Kevin chiming in on the tax question. Uh, we kind of studied that based on today's mill rate or the approved mill rate, the, at the last go around and sort of assessments based on our proposed sizes. And we show about 674,887 is that tax increment annually.
You have a projection for the sales tax?
Somewhere. Uh, yeah, bear with me again. That one might take me a little longer.
Also want to, this is John again. I also want to clarify on the variance for the hotel. Um, the, the topography within that area is sloping towards the, the, the center of those two streams that you see in the middle of the site. Um, the front of the hotel still falls within that three story, um, you know, ordinance that we have. Now the backstory, that the, the backside of the hotel, that's where we're proposing to have that, that larger facade to where that we could potentially put lower units and activity, indoor activities like a workout room on. So, you know, the front side of that would still kind of emulate, uh, the characteristics that are found, you know, within, around town. But the backside would be a bit taller to take up some of that grain.
Well, is the front side going to have a parapet on the front?
Uh, yes, sir.
And will the fire department sign off on this as far as the height?
We have been working with the fire department on this and the configuration and, you know, we have applied some of their comments um, as we go forward and we actually get into that FMVP, you know, we will work closely with them to make sure that everything falls within code. Yes, sir.
Have you already got a brand on board for this?
We're still working on that currently.
And I, I believe in my correctness saying that you got a letter of commitment from the Predators.
Uh, Kevin, stay answered that.
This is Kevin again. We're, uh, working through kind of the late stages of those negotiations. Uh, so, you know, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying that we have that signed off on yet. Um, but we're, you know, 99% the way there. And then to speak to the sales tax question, I don't have a study in front of me right now that I can provide that number, but we will, we would be willing to study that for you if you'd like.
A little hard to hear because what I want to know is why it's going to come to the city. Uh, as this project goes on, if we take 674,887 dollars and then the approximate sales tax revenue, I think we need to make sure that the city's not going backwards.
And to clarify that statement, there is no sales tax portion that we're asking to collect from the city.
No, I'm talking about a projection that the city would collect in sales tax. You have a projection of what the restaurants and hotel will do, the bed tax.
I think that that's something that we could study.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, guys, do we have any more questions that we need to ask or anything? Seeing none, we had a motion, we had a motion by Councilman Overton, affected by Councilman John D. Alexander. I'd like to say thank you for taking the equation right there. Mayor, anybody like saying anything else when it goes on? Okay, seeing none, uh, I'll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fang?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I's, a zero N's.
Okay, we're moving it up. Let's move on down to, uh, on the agenda, on the agenda, I'm sorry, uh, item number two and item number three and item number four will be together, but I guess we'll, uh, present them separately. But, uh, Mr. McCord, got it?
Okay, um, this, this is actually three items that you're going to be considering tonight. But I'll try to present them as a single item for the most part. This is their first request is for plan of service and annexation of 655 acre uh, piece of property located east of Highway 109 and north of Red River Road wet on the west side.
Yes, Joe.
Of Station Camp Creek. And so, uh, this is what's commonly known as the Bowles Farm. It's been used agriculturally for many, many years. Uh, the applicants are looking to, uh, rezone the property with a master development plan as well for, uh, changing the zoning from rural residential, which is a county designation to planned business park for 109 of those acres. And for, um, and that's an adjustment, uh, and I'll get into that briefly uh, from what the planning commission reviewed. They also want to change the zoning, uh, on 124 acres of it to mixed use primarily along Highway 109. And then the balance 422 acres, they requesting R8 plan residential development. So this is this property that I'm showing on the map here now, uh, so, uh, outlined in yellow with the screen pattern overlaying it. Again, uh, this is a proposed zoning change that was presented to the planning commission, which shows the, and I want to orient you here is Highway 109 on the west side of the property, Highway 25 Red River Road on the south side of the property, the new Albert Gallatin Road extension. It, it goes through the center of the property. And, uh, they are looking to rezone the westerly portion adjacent to Highway 109 and the interchange, the new interchange and parts of Albert Gallatin to MU zoning mixed use. The northwesterly portion, uh, which is a little larger than this, uh, under their revision, uh, 109 acres to planned business park. And then the balance of it, the easterly portions of the property, uh, to R8 PRD, which is a residential development. The, um, planning commission, and this, this is a map that shows essentially the same thing. There's part of your agenda package, which shows those areas where the zoning would be located on the property. The master development plan includes, again, uh, the area in blue for mixed use zoning, which would include commercial office and up to 900 multifamily units. The northerly portion, uh, which was approved by the planning commission is shown in the, I guess it's pink color, which would be planned business park. This has now been, is proposed to be extended down to frontage on Albert Gallatin Extension. And there's some modification and I'll show you the little, the little modification. Perhaps I can toggle back and forth between what the planning commission had recommended and also uh, what has now been revised based on discussions with the economic development director and the, and the developer. But, and then the bulk of the properties, uh, is shown here in yellow, uh, pattern and some in the orange would be for single family homes and, uh, attached town homes. Uh, these would be a typical single family homes that would be built on the, the individual lots and the town homes, uh, that these are possibilities that would be provided there. Uh, some of the commercial areas in the MU zoning portion, which would accommodate restaurants, retail and office uses. These are typical designs of those. And this would be a typical office and like industrial complex, it would be appropriate in the planned business park that they intend to develop. The applicant proposes to develop these in stages or in phases as well. Uh, the area shown in green would be phase one and the area in blue would be phase two. The, most of the properties, and let me go back up to the, um, the, uh, master plan here. The properties that are located south, the residential properties located south and, and then on this slide here, north is to the left of the screen, east is to the top of the screen, so that you're oriented that way. And this big area here that's shown residentially on the south portion of the property, south of Albert Gallatin Extension would all be a gated community targeted for people 55 and older. It within these types of homes here as well. Uh, that would be done in phases as showed, so parts of the, uh, development closer to Albert Gallatin would be done in phase one. One thing you might want to consider and discuss is this new collector road, which would connect Albert Gallatin parallel to Highway 109 to Red River Road as to whether or not all of that should be included in phase one. That would provide, um, uh, circulation through the site without having to get to, onto Highway 109. Now, uh, after the planning commission had reviewed this project, the applicant had, was requested by EDA to make some adjustments. And the primarily, primary change in those adjustments affected the planned business park, which expanded that area by about 20 acres and then changed or retracted, uh, another 20 acres or so uh, from the residential area, a little bit from the MU. And this is the alternative plan that they have by expanding the planned business park. They, uh, increased the number of town home lots, decreased the number of single family lots, primarily in this area here on the east northeast portion of the property. Uh, for the most part, everything south of, of Albert Gallatin Avenue Extension would remain the same as would most of the MU, except for that portion that was converted over to planned business park. So what they, the total result was a reduction in the number of, well, multifamily, uh, or excuse me, total residential units, uh, by about 50 units, I believe. Let me make sure, confirm that. Okay, let me get my notes out here. See. Yeah, from, um, 1,390 units to 1,350 total residential units. So it was a slight decrease from intensity or density that what we saw at the planning commission. Likewise, obviously they added more planned business park by removing some of the MU and they increased the total square footage allowed in the planned business park from, uh, 1,800,000 square feet to 2 million square feet. The, uh, total square feet and the number of residential units in the MU portion remain the same. So, uh, basically, other than making some adjustments, the total impact is going to be about the same. They will be required to, of course, do a traffic study as they develop these, this project in phases over multiple years to indicate what other, uh, offsite and or onsite improvements are needed and what phasing would be required. The applicant is also requesting a few exceptions and those are commonly requested with planned residential development zoning to, um, uh, allow for 5,000 square foot, uh, single family lots, 3,000 square foot attached lots and the 1,500 square foot town home sized lots. Again, those are generally typically applied. Uh, the density for the multifamily would be at about 13 units per acre, which is less than the maximum 14.52 units per acre allowed in the MU zoning district. One thing I want to point out that's a little unusual about this property is there's a lot of open space that will be preserved or kept as part of this development, both interior to the residential portions and along some of the intermittent creeks and along, uh, East Fork of Camp Creek. And this would also include Greenway, which is part of the master plan for Greenway's part of the Gallatin on Move 2020 Plan. It also provides for a connection with the Langford Farms subdivision that's in construction now in the northeast corner of the property. So that would provide an additional connection from that road, from that development so that it's not relied completely upon Old Douglas Lane for access to and from that subdivision and gets them ready access to Albert Gallatin and of course 109 that way. The, uh, other than those changes, which I wanted to point out, the planning commission did review, again, the earlier plan and recommended approval uh, this, uh, plan. So, uh, if you have any questions about that, I think the applicant is online and is willing to answer some of those questions. One thing I do want to point out is they are proposing some large, what, what I would call state lots along Red River Road. And those would be, uh, essentially is larger, larger than some of the older single family homes that, uh, predated some of the subdivisions and properties on the south side of Red River Road. So large, just a few of those. And those would be, uh, accessible from Red River Road and or from within the adult active community portion of the development.
Bill, was it a unanimous vote in support of this, uh, development out of planning commission?
Uh, I believe, that was before I went on vacation. I believe there, Ms. Love, you might want to, uh,
I, it was unanimous.
I think it was.
That I had reservations and may not vote.
Right. I think that, I think they were in favor, but there was some discussion and some concerns and, and some of those are reflected in the conditions of approval in your draft ordinance.
Do we, Lynn?
Yep. I don't, I don't remember the size of the lots being brought up. Did you say that the single family residence? Did you say that the single family residences lot size were only five thousand square feet?
That's what they're requesting. Now, that's the, that's an average or size that you're going to have. Uh, some of these smaller, uh, lots, these attached unit lots, and of course, the townhouse lots would be much smaller. But these lots that are shown in yellow would be five thousand square feet. Now, some of them may be larger.
Didn't we discuss at the planning commission last night that we don't have five thousand square lots at this time and that they are, they should be about six thousand?
Well, that was for another project.
Well, I thought that that, that when we talked about it, it was for overall, overall Gallatin.
Well, the whole, the whole reason for planned residential development is that you can ask for flexibility in your lot sizes. So that's what they're doing here and that's kind of what that's been done throughout the whole city over the years that that, uh, PRD zoning has been in place.
Um, also, uh, let's see, uh, did you bring up that, uh, Red River Road was going to be widened, I believe?
Uh, those, in traffic improvements to Red River Road, uh, one of the conditions was that it be, not necessarily widen, but it'd be evaluated at the time a traffic study is done. Uh, there may be a need to acquire additional right of way to provide a sidewalk along that section of road. Uh, it is a state maintained road with twelve foot lanes, or I believe it's twelve foot lane. So those improvements, including turning movements and stuff with the collector road, that would be in this southwestern corner would be evaluated as each master development plan comes on, uh, for consideration by the planning commission.
When we were discussing this at planning commission, I asked the owner if he could please, I, I said, I, I didn't, I, I'm, I really like the, um, active adult idea for the residences, but the nine hundred other townhouses and apartments that were in the mixed use part, I don't like. And I asked if they would consider changing that from being rentals to owned. And I did not get any kind of a answer or commitment. So I just wanted to let you all know that.
I believe the applicant is available here tonight and will be able to answer some of those questions for you.
Do we have a representative here now, this development?
You think that's John Hawes? I'm going to turn on John Hawes's. All right, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, uh, council members. Uh, this is John Hawes. I'm a principal with Edge Planning, Landscape Architecture and Urban Design. I'm sure I've got, uh, some of my other consultants on the team and the owners here as well on the phone. Um, but, uh, very happy to bring this plan before you, uh, a little backstory and then I'll address, uh, Councilwoman Love's comment. Um, we began working on this with the Bowles family, actually ten years ago, uh, when the, um, Albert Gallatin Extension, when they were first approached to bisect their farm, um, they were, you know, concerned how it would impact operations. And, uh, while they realized it could bring a greater property value to them in the long run, we were really looking at intersection locations and, and alignments and so on with T-Dot at that time. Since then, in the last probably three years, the Bowles family through their, their broker, uh, Stan Hardaway, came to us and said, "We are getting approached by multiple developers, predominantly residential, that want to buy thirty acres and rezone it, annex it in the city and rezone it and move on and then do the next thirty acres." That, they were getting those calls literally every day. To their, um, credit, they did not want to do that and they were not in any kind of position where they were forced to do that. So we began working with them, um, first by sitting down with, uh, staff and looking over the current land use plan, uh, current comprehensive plan, um, and developing a plan that would work for, if they wanted to sell fifty acres, they could do that, but it would be part of a master plan. Um, the plan that we developed with the Bowles family was very similar to this plan. The big difference is that, um, we had talked about on a property that's six hundred and fifty acres, you're looking for a, um, a whale, a, a rare whale, especially in COVID times, that is going to come in and say, "We'll develop the entire parcel. We want to take down the entire thing." So we developed a strategy that was more built around finding a bunch of sharks that, that might take down a hundred acres at a time. Well, fortunately, I think for everyone, one developer came to the table and it's a developer with experience in large mixed use developments. Um, they are experienced in active adult communities. They understand how they work, how they function, how dollars are spent, how, how they travel and so on. Um, so very fortunate that they came along. We, we never, uh, thought that it would be an active adult community, but it works really well. And, uh, they were able to reach agreement with, uh, with the Bowles family, um, assuming everything moves forward. Um, so we're, we're very pleased about that and, um, been working with staff and, and Economic Development Department, uh, all through the process over the last couple of years, especially to bring this plan before you tonight. And we appreciate your time and, and listening to it. With that said, um, I apologize because I did not have in my notes that there was a direct question from Councilwoman Love in regards to that, considering making those all owner occupied. Um, what I will say is that it is not the intent of the developer to develop nine hundred, uh, rental units. That this plan, six hundred and fifty-five acres, is meant to come to fruition over the course of five to fifteen years. We want to keep the plan as flexible as possible. Now, we gave up flexibility because when we sat down with planning, instead of planned, planned general commercial, which is a much more wide open zoning than, uh, MU. And instead of, I think it was MRO, we went with, or instead of like industrial, we went with planned business park, which again confines us some more. We went with a use that protected, protected those things, I think. And really, more than anything, gives us the ability to build the vision that the city leaders over the last ten years had for this property, what, which was an emerging walkable neighborhood. An emerging walkable neighborhood needs rental housing. The business owners in the planned business park will need rental housing. If they don't get it here, they'll go down the road. They will be renting. We feel it's rental is a, is an important component of this plan. Doesn't have to be all nine hundred units. We would prefer not to limit, um, set up some limit, uh, based upon, uh, you know, we, we like to work off of factual information. So it is an important component to have in a mixed use community, particularly a suburban mixed use community. I can also tell you that it's been the experience of the developer that they will see a lot of relocations of the active adult that come in and say, "We want to live here. When is the next phase open and, and when can you have me a house bill?" Well, they say nine to twelve months. Oh, well, you know, we're, we're coming now. Well, there's a rental place for you. And, and that's how this thing functions. It also ends up being, um, uh, grandparents and, you know, families come together. The other important thing about that is to be a truly successful mixed use community. You have to have a level of residency in close proximity that functions in different ways. In other ways, in other words, if everyone's a homeowner and if everyone does this, but you know, the, the more or less the pattern that exists within Gallatin pre-COVID, which was, "We live here, we're going to get on one oh nine, we're going to pick up Vietnam veterans and we're going to drive downtown to work from, from a white collar perspective." That, that user leaves this mixed use retail area empty. And if, if, if you don't believe me, go down to Indian Lake Village at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. So our feeling is we want to be able to accommodate as many residential options as we can. Uh, we are not prepared to limit these to owner occupied only. Um, I would, you know, love to discuss that with all of the council members in terms of, uh, what that does, what that does for you. It doesn't protect those units from being rented. Those units can still be rented, even if they're sold to someone. It's a state law. So we're trying to, uh, behave in a, uh, in, in a very, um, respectable and responsible manner, but also leave some flexibility for the plan. So I, I hope that answers her question, um, in regards to Red River Road. Uh, we did, um, go ahead and perform a preliminary traffic analysis that's been reviewed or, you know, study that's been reviewed by engineering. Um, we've been working back and forth with them on potential improvements. A lot of it will be triggered at, uh, at FMDP, but, uh, specifically as it relates to Red River. Um, we had a community meeting. We met with several neighbors from those adjacent neighborhoods. They were very pleased with all the green space and the large lots along Ro- Red River and were really not doing any development beyond that connector road. And right now, I think we have improvements slated for that intersection and potential traffic lights and so on. But that would be determined at FMDP. Um, Mr. McCord had brought up the connector road and what phase it was in and so on. And there are some large phases there. The, the truth of the matter is the active adult will be the first phase that comes out of the ground. The connector road, what we've done is put some limitations to say, if parcel, I can't quite see that there, that, uh, in the light blue or, you know, that's shown in the phase, that parcel and the one along one oh nine, if those were to develop, we would not end up with a, a missing link, so to speak. So once that road becomes a certain length, we've agreed to connect it. But to connect it from day one, I think could really screw with some traffic patterns and we haven't talked with engineering about that at all. Um, you know, there, there, there's a lot of solutions there, but we've, we've proposed to, uh, make that connection when development happens at either end. And then we want to, want them to connect because, uh, you know, again, I, most of the traffic, the traffic study had showed us that connector road will be used primarily internally and most people will be getting on one oh nine.
Any chance of you, uh, considering make, putting these houses on bigger lots?
Um, so a- a- as, as, I, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Um, what I will say is it's one of the trade-offs of active adult is that, again, with this, uh, particular developer, they've been doing it for a while and they found that the active adult, they wanted much of their space as they can inside the house and as little as they have to maintain outside the house. So the lots are small a- as a design solution and as a market response.
I was also talking about the other, the other single family house in, in the other area.
Okay. Um, you know, that, that's something we can look at. What I will say is that the lot sizes that are mentioned, and I think it's on the cover sheet. I don't know if you all can see it, but the screen's jumping all over the place. Those are minimum lot sizes. Those are not average lot sizes. That's the smallest we can go is five thousand square feet. There will be lots that are larger than that. We have lots on here, uh, you know, along, uh, Red River that are almost four or five acres. Um, but in the, in the grouping, the single family north of Albert Gallatin Ha- Albert Gallatin Extension, there are lots that are, you know, that are above five thousand square feet. There's lots that are above six thousand square feet. The minimum we can do is the five thousand square feet. So it's not an average. That's the minimum we can do. So our average will be above that.
Like you kind of said on your plan.
Yes.
That's kind of what I thought.
Got any other questions, Mayor?
I mute myself. Um, I, I would like some input from some of the council members that have been here for, um, a longer period of time than I and a few of the newer ones. Um, because when I look at this extension, the amount of money that's been spent on it, I want to make sure that the development meets the intention of the investment in that road and that we will realize return on that investment. I also do want to say that while I appreciate such a comprehensive development, I mean, it's kind of thing that in the past we've so desired and dreamed of. Um, it is, you know, a comprehensive presentation, but this is a lot for us to, um, approve all at once. And it brings back that concern to me that I keep saying about, you know, how are we going to dr- drive redevelopment and infill development when we're keeping, continuing to develop kind of outside of the city? So, um, those are the things that I'm interested in.
Will, the longest tenured one on here, I will say that, and, and James, are you on there still? You're still there, right?
I am, I am, sir.
And I even predate you on this, but you know, this has been going on for a long time. I mean, I've been on here twenty-three years and it's been going on not quite that long, but a long time. And, and I appreciate them doing the bigger business park. But I think when we first envisioned this road, I mean, I think that, and, and I might be mistaken, but in John, you've been on here a long time too, that we were doing more, you know, not industrial, but light industrial, uh, commercial, things like that. Am I correct?
And that's why we asked them to change it to a planned business park, given the city's pivot from, from manufacturing to technology. I think, uh, this fits in well. They did come back and add close to thirty acres to the original, um, you know, plan they had for the planned business park. Um, the, um, the blue that's on the bottom half where the road goes through there also allows for, for office. Um, the reason we changed to planned business park is because, you know, all the blue that's down there also allows for dry cleaners and mattress stores and all those other things. And so they were, they were, uh, uh, amenable to our request to change that to a, a planned business park. And so I, I think we're, we're certainly headed in the right direction. Originally, um, this is about, uh, sixty percent of what was originally planned to be a planned business park there. Um, times have changed, uh, and the fact that we do have someone that's going to come in and take down the whole thing and give us a, uh, uh, you know, an overall plan and development. Um, the developer has shared through John Hawes that, uh, their, their Belliwick is not a planned business park, but they have brought in consultants to make sure that that planned business park is developed properly. That's, that's one thing that's, uh, I've never run into with a consultant before when we've asked for something. They brought in consultants that, that do that kind of thing. And so I'm, I'm appreciative that they've done that. We do need a lot of this stuff that's out there.
I agree.
Um, overall, I'm supportive. Thank you.
I agree. I just, I think that the, you know, I guess the biggest thing that I have a problem with is the density of the residential. You know, it's going to be hard for me to support them putting apartments and things like that on there, you know, and, you know, that we've got so many and we're saturated in this town right now. And, and I think this is going to be my big sticking point is the density of the residential.
I agree with Craig.
Pay attention to the, to length of time it will take to develop this. This is about coming on, on board.
I totally understand. I totally understand.
And Mr. Hayes, uh, you know, uh, you may be absolutely correct that, that you are, uh, inundated and you have, oh, you know, the, the city has over-delivered on multifamily rental. Um, the market's going to tell us that here. If, if the market says, "We don't, there's no, nobody's interested in this." That's why we have the ability, we can put, we can put the active adult in the MU if we bring it forward that way in FMDP.
I, I totally understand what you're talking about. I totally, I understand.
Yeah.
We have waiting lists at our apartments right now.
Once we, but my point is, once we zone it, it's zoned, okay? It's zoned for that.
Yeah.
And we can't go back. You know, you might not be developing it ten years from now. So I might say, okay, we might go through another recession. And then they come back and, oh, well, guess what? We're going to put. apartments right here, you know? So, I, I get it. I understand.
That's a valid statement.
Yeah.
My point is, is just the density and that's what I'm stuck on right now with this development.
Uh, we got Mayor, Mayor's in the queue.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say, and I fear the scenario whereby the residential gets developed, but the office or, or, you know, whatever it may be, does not. And then that return on the investment really becomes very poor for that investment in that road. The density that you all are mentioning, I, I, I think, you know, there may be a ti- a, a time for it, but it's not now because there's still so much within our core city where, you know, residential could be developed, which would continue to concentrate our services, our, and would use existing investment as far as infrastructure goes. And, and, and so as we, you know, look at what actually brings us sustainability, it's not, although we understand that there is a demand throughout middle Tennessee for more housing, that's not what is going to balance us as a community, especially in the situation that we're in now where we have so much housing coming online. We have to have the investment of commercial and, and office and, and light industrial or tech to balance that so that we are not getting upside down with what it's going to cost us to maintain. Or all of us to, to pay for the housing that's coming or here.
Ms. Mayor, if, if I can address that, I understand that and I understand those concerns and I understand that when, when you, you know, talk about redevelopment and, and there are certainly places for that, and that's an important thing in, in many communities, especially Gallatin as well as the downtown square. What I would say is when we begun this process, we had done some sort of, and, and Mr. Fenton may be able to speak to this. I don't want to put him on the spot, but we had done some preliminary market studies and the, you know, our projections with that 120 acres, particularly with the types of users that the economic development department has mentioned that there, are their targets. Those are not necessarily 50 acre users. Those may be five to 10 to 15 acre users. And when you look at 2 million square feet of planned business park, that represents probably somewhere between 20 and 30 years of market absorption. So, we can't create a market, but what we are doing is by making a large mixed-use master plan on 655 acres. We have separated ourselves on the site map for the state in terms of a planned business park that offers a variety of housing options with more than 25% of the site surrounded by open space with trails that are linked. When we break this thing down into pieces, you don't get that. And so I hear those concerns. We think there's a number of benefits to this approach. And, and I can tell you that, you know, it was, that's why the client pushed back, you know, so hard on how many acres for planned business park because we do think it will probably be the slowest development to happen on this side, just because of the nature of those users. You're talking about relocations and, and tech and the office market is up in the air right now, what it might be. So, the 20 acres hurt, but what really hurt was we also gave the planned business park 1,400 lineal feet of prime commercial space on the frontage of Albert Gallatin Extension. And so, we're, we're committed to it. And, and the other thing I would say is we're hopeful that what this does is attract other office users. And really, if you can hit a home run with a user, you can get some, some, you know, partners that come with them. So.
Well, I appreciate that. I just, you know, that, that prime frontage was created by $40 million investment and I just think it's important that the city get the most in return for that investment that they possibly can. And, and, you know, the housing situation's impact on traffic concerns us all. One question was asked of me earlier this week and I think it was a really good one and it actually aligns with the county and the city working on what's called the net corridor and, and planning for the future for less interrupted travel throughout the city. And so I think that, you know, as we move forward through this process, there's going to be some questions of you all and, and suggestions that there be contributions to support that investment, maybe off-site because that is such a impact on, you know, our traffic patterns in that area. So, I, I just want to bring that up because I think that is something that we need to have discussion about at some point. Engineering's, you know, engineering's talked about it a little bit. We do that with some other areas of town, but we have not really addressed it in this area of town.
I got a couple of questions. This one's from Mr. Fenton. What, what is the projected population in the next five years for City of Gallatin?
So, from 2015 special census to right now, the city has grown from 34,474 to about 46,722 people. And that's based on the fact that in 2000 census, 2010 census and 2015 special census, it was 2.4 people per residential electric meter. And you extrapolate that out, we're at 20, 46,277 people right now. So, that's 2,200 people a year for the last five years. If that growth continues, you can, you can look at what that does to us over the next, you say five years? The next five years would bring an additional 12,000 people. I, I'm not certain that we can sustain that growth. I'm not certain that the macroeconomic, you know, macroeconomics will allow that, but we will surpass 50,000 people in the next five years without a doubt.
Okay. Another question from you, Mr. Fenton. Do you have an approximate idea of how many of those people that, the influx of people we've had in the last five years? How many are renters and how many are homeowners?
I cannot accurately answer that. I can give you anecdotal evidence as to what's occurring here. Right now, I know we feel that there are an abundance of apartments. I do know that at six of the larger apartment complex that are out there now, we have waiting lists and we, we are not overbuilt as far as, as, as the demand is concerned. I also know that banks will not loan for continued construction of apartments. So, and, and actually just sat down with the market president today of a local bank in, in Gallatin and they will not loan if there's not a demand out there. There isn't demand out there for us right now. I, none of them that I've talked to have a projection more than three years. For the next three years, we do have a consistent growth. So, so, so we're good now. Most of the apartments that have been proved, we have one on Douglas Bend that's just coming up out of the ground. So, we don't have any idea for that one. The one on Harris Lane, they're finishing up on the north side. I don't know if you've been out there and looked. Those are really nice apartments. They have fireplaces, chimneys, double car garages and those are renting as soon as they come online. Part of this is driven by Facebook construction. They took on 65 apartments out there in that same area to keep things going. That will be here for the next six plus years. I think right now, we're not overbuilt. That's just my opinion, given what my conversations with local lending institutions are. Beyond five years, I, I can't give you an idea.
And this, my next question's from Mr. Haas. If this project is started, do local contractors, tradesmen, base and people, will they be able to bid these projects or do we bring somebody from out of state?
No, I, I mean, I can tell you, we haven't discussed that, but for site work contractors right now, I, you know, unless they're really small, local, there's a good chance that people that are on there under the GC of some, say, civil constructions, they're from out of state because the demand, and there's still a lot of site work to be done. You know, we will certainly bid this process, you know, through the developer. There will be multiple bidding opportunities for, for site work as far as the homes and the builders. I can't speak to that, but I can tell you that most of them these days are kind of anywhere you can find a framer, anywhere you can find a, you know, someone to do the plumbing. That's where they're coming from, you know, in order to, to meet deadlines. But, you know, we'd be happy to discuss that, but we're certainly would love for locals to be involved. There's no reason not to.
Councilman Fan, if I may.
I think Councilman JD was next.
Go ahead, go ahead. I can wait. Go ahead, Miss Fan.
Oh, no, no, no.
No, please, go ahead.
Councilman Fan, I do know that our office has received calls from large home builders from Atlanta and one other state wanting to come in and do that, but they indicated that they are looking for, in, for workers to help them put that kind of a development together.
Sorry, I couldn't hear any of that.
Um, I've got a comment about the multifamily, which, which might be helpful whenever you all want to give me an opportunity, but I'll, I'll let you go ahead to the councilman and speak.
Uh, who is, I think John Diggs has been trying to ask.
Yeah.
Please, I want John Diggs to get in the queue.
Yeah, I, I just want to make a statement to Mr. Haas. I, I love the way you got this laid out and spread it out. I, I like the, the, certainly I like the 20-plus percent green spaces in this development. And I'm glad it's only one development that we're dealing with instead of four or five maybe chopped up. So, I, I'm very impressed with, with it and I, and I love it. I just, I appreciate you meeting with people in the community and trying to work out things to please them, but you know, you won't be able to please everybody. But, and plus the, the little area you got for the seniors, I, I like that train of thought in there too. So, I'm, I'm really excited about this development myself.
Well, thank you. And, and, and we know there are a lot of pluses and minuses on, on a project of, of this size and, 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 you know, fortunately, we have a, a family who's from Gallatin that, that cares about their land and, and cares about the vision for it. And I think that really drove the open space and, and, and what I will say is there, there's trade-offs. And with the active adult, which I would say is a positive and, you know, little or no impact to schools, traffic patterns are entirely different. You're not talking about peak traffic flows. The trade-off for that is that the lots become smaller and there's more public open space. So, that public open space, then you look at, okay, let's look at density. And, and I know we've talked, you know, density was mentioned. I think it's important to note that 400, uh, let me see what the number is, 420 acres of the 655 are for sale residential. Those units equate to approximately three units an acre, which is well below what the R8 allows. The, I think it's even less density than the Langford Farm site that's up there in the top left. In regards to the 900 residential units in MU, if you add those two together, the 900 plus the 422 in the single family section, the active adult section and the single family section, we are looking at, and, and with the acreage. So, your total acreage is 546 acres is, is available for residential at a overall density of four units an acre. This is a very, you know, well, it's a very low density overall for a site this large for mixed use. And that will be a challenge to attract retailers as a result of that, but we understand that. So, that's one thing. The other thing I wanted to point out, if, if whoever has the screen, if they could stop on the residential pages, a couple of things we've done here that are different than maybe some other applicants. One, we've written into the PMDP and it will be followed up on the FMDP. If you could go to the next slide, please, page eight, I think, there's 7.1, yeah. So, if you look at the bottom there, that's some of the residential units that we're talking about. And what we've done is we've controlled building height. So, along 109, the buildings cannot be more than two stories for the first 100 feet. When they are adjacent to single family, they cannot be more than two stories for the first 100 feet. So, we've, we've added buffers there. We've talked also along 109, the buildings can only be oriented with their short side towards 109. So, no one's looking at a suburban, you know, rental, rental building that is 300 feet long. The short side has to be to those buildings. We've also addressed massing and scale. So, you, you know, when people say the word multifamily, a vision comes to their head, but I think our vision is, is a little different. And the truth of the matter is that some of those could very well be condominiums. If you go back to those residential pages, a couple of them are actually condominiums. So, it could very much work that way. We still think you need to have rental properties, rental communities, which are different. And the other thing about the rental property here is in many cases, it can be above retail. It can be intermixed on the same street with offices. That's what the MU does. And, and the whole point of, of mixed-use facilities being successful is that there is support from outside the development, even in a case where it's 500 acres. But the people who keep those businesses alive, keep the sandwich shops, the restaurants alive, the barber shops are the people that live there. And when we start talking about offsite improvements, I think you'll also see that the, the interior trips on a project like this are so much larger than what traditionally they could be. So, that's the last thing I wanted to do is just point out that we are sensitive to that issue. We know it's an issue and, and really it's an issue all over. And we're sensitive to it and we tried to be, uh, address it the best way we could with these architectural standards.
I would like to say something. I think this is a beautiful piece of property. I think the plan, the first time I've seen it, I think it's a great plan. However, I do agree with Craig Hayes. What, I know you say this is market, market-driven. I understand that, but also during the last campaign, I mean, I, there's 20,000 people, it seems like in this area that are concerned about the rental aspect of this proposal right here. I made it clear from the beginning. That's the only thing that I'm really against is a rental part of this development. You want next, like to speak?
Because the mixed use is still has 900 townhouses or, and/or apartments or condos.
You know, I think it's a good plan. I wish the lots was not as dense as what they really are.
Um, sir, the, the lots are at three units an acre, which is less dense than the Langford Farms in the northeast corner of the property.
But when you say that, you're adding in the, maybe come from, I'm trying to say all of the out part, the, um,
Open space.
The open space.
Uh, yes, yes. I, I mean, that's, you know, that's, a- a- again, we're, we're talking about gross density. Absolutely. The, the, the land, if the lots were bigger, if we weren't doing active adult and we were doing quarter acre lots, you would not have 25% open space. That the, it would be the same area with the same lot count, but less open space.
I like the active adult part, portion. I like the green space. It's the, it's just these tiny lots and all this, all these townhouses, apartments and density. For me, that concerns me. density for me that concerns me.
Would I be correct in making the statement, the greater the greater the density, the higher the tax revenue?
That's affirmative.
I wouldn't say necessarily. I mean, you're talking about the tax generated on a parcel or?
I'm talking about property taxes.
On ten acre.
Well, if you've got, uh, two buildings on a half acre or a third acre or whatever, you're going to have two buildings to be taxed. Or if you've got one building sitting on like, you've got one building to be taxed.
That's, I mean, there is that, but then you have to.
Consider the value of the property.
Yeah, well, and and you know, and if it's multifamily and it's rental, it's commer- it's taxed at a commercial rate. But but again, you know, I go back to my whole thing about, you know, where's the balance? And and this is why Gallatin has been so healthy financially is because we've had a really good balance of industry and manufacturing and and you know, different different types of jobs here that have brought in revenue in addition to our property taxes. And I just I worry about us getting out of balance because.
The thing I like most about it is the fifty-five and over community doesn't affect the schools.
I do like that.
And I do wonder why they don't have a funeral home in there for a fifty-five and over.
Cause that would be competing against Councilman Alexander, right?
All right, and we're gonna take that off the table.
I I don't know that that's a permitted use. I I will say that one thing that, you know, it it some people uh understand, you know, the the humor behind it and some some people, but this is a cradle to grave community. The idea is that if you're twenty-eight years old and recently married and expecting your first child, there's a place for you here. If you're sixty years old and you're the grandparent of that family, there's a place for you here. If you are making fifty thousand dollars a year and working in downtown Gallatin, there's a place for you here to buy. And that makes for a healthy mixed use community is a mix of ages, a mix of workers. You know, one thing we haven't talked about is are the other amenities. Um, there is a you know, amenity and lifestyle package that will come with the active adult, about a ten acre amenity with pools and tennis courts and clubhouse and dining halls, basically a country club lifestyle. Um, but there's also another amenity for the uh, portion of the residential on the north side of the, uh, extension. And again, you know, one thing, it it's interesting that these discussions come full circle and and I will tell you, Mrs. Mayor, that, um, you know, your staff is very in tune with you and all the folks we've been talking to, because we had these discussions, and I think what led us to the planned business park, what led us to the mixed use was really, um, hearing from the Economic Development Department to sort of, I don't know if the right way to say it is up the game, but one a number that has stuck with me is we want jobs that are paying at least seventy thousand dollars a year here. That is a tech R and D facility. That's not going to be a warehouse industrial facility. And so to do that, we think we actually, uh, complement that, um, goal with this plan.
And I agree with you. I think you do too. I mean, I just love the especially what you said about the the large inside, small outside, especially when you get to be a senior like some of council members are. So they don't want a lot of.
Do you look in the mirror or?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying. I I just love the plan. I think it's great.
Thank you.
If I could just add, um, Mr. Huss and his development team and the developers have been very responsive to our requests. As you, uh, were shown from what, uh, Mr. McCord put up on the screen originally to where they are now, they made considerable, um, changes to what was going on. And I mean, we worked over the weekend. We spent, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday working on this to make sure they could put that stuff together, and they were responsive to it and, um, again, I I think he said that it may take longer, uh, to put that park together, given the the RFIs and the responses that we're getting here in 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 Gallatin. It won't take nearly as long to fill that park up as they think it will. Gallatin, because of your leadership and your investment, um, is truly in a unique position. And we have the ability to make that park, uh, be extremely successful much quicker than developers think they could.
Mr. Fenton, you you made the comment earlier, I I I correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, if your perception is the apartments that we've got already now that are in use, already almost full?
Yes, there are four or five of the apartment complexes out there, the newer ones that already have waiting lists. And if you go on Harris Lane, turning east off of three eighty-six, on the right, you have the Chandler, and on the left, if you look at those apartments, they're coming up there now. They have they're gorgeous apartments. They have chimneys. All of them have fireplaces. They have two car garages. And those are running out as soon as as they are finished. So I think, uh, the economy is is proving what's necessary here.
Well, you know, there was a discussion about that today and, uh, uh, we went to a, uh, chamber event, it's Council Overton, John D. Alexander, Aline, myself, and Councilwoman Love. Well, Jimmy, correct me, I think you asked the audience about apartments and apartment living, and I think every one of them.
Everyone in that room, everyone.
Raise their hand that they live in apartments.
Yeah, it was it was Leadership Gallatin that the Chamber of Commerce does. And I just asked, I just asked the 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 whole entire room, how many actually live, have has ever lived in an apartment? Everybody in the room raised their hand. And not only that, but half of the room or more currently live in an apartment, and even one lady said her eighty-year-old parents still live there. So we know there's a need for it. I I feel like I'm with the rest of the council. I mean, if he's gonna start out and he's gonna put apartments there, I would I would be willing to say I'm not gonna vote for this, but with with them starting out with this active community, I promise you, being in the banking business, that you know, five, six years down the road, if there's not a need for apartments out there, they're not gonna build them because they're not gonna get anybody financing or anything else. So with this starting out with this active community and hopefully, Mr. Fenton's gonna get us some good businesses to go in that business park. I tell you, it it's hard to find somebody that takes on this bigger project that makes it this nice and it includes everything from from, you know, small people to children to to seniors and 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 over. Uh, it it's just hard to find somebody that can take on this massive a project and do this kind of design. Um, and and I applaud them for it. Uh, I think this will be, um, a good project and and hopefully there won't be that many apartments on the front because maybe the demand won't be for it, but I know rental properties are there. And and today was a good example. Meeting with Leadership Gallatin, everybody in that room has lived in an apartment. Uh, myself, uh, you know, M- Mr. Hayes and I used to live in an apartment years and years ago in the same apartment complex. So we know there's a need for them. But, excuse me, but I'd I commend them for for taking time to, um, understand this area, and and I think it'll be a benefit to Gallatin. And we're saying that I'll say I'll make a motion that we approve this and send it on to council.
And I second that.
John, we can't hear you for some reason talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can, man.
My wife told me I was talking too loud, so I'm sorry, guys. I'll I'll go back to loud. But we have a we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Overton. We have a second. Councilman, uh, John D. Alexander, which opens floor for more discussion. Uh, Jimmy, I'd like to say one thing. I'm not against apartments at all. Uh, I don't, I think the public perception is we've got too many of them. I feel that way. Uh, I would like to wait a little while longer before I vote anymore on apartments at this time. That's just my perspective right now.
Mr. Fennel, um, I would offer that, um, my office will call all the, uh, major apartment complexes and determine, uh, residency level so you can be assured or or, uh, approved or, you know, regulated that those apartments are filled and that we do have waiting lists.
I would like to see that, Mr. Fenton. Uh, you know, and this is only pushing it up to council right now. Uh, and and still, there's more times for people to to change their vote right here. But, uh, I will stick with my guns right now.
All right.
Well, and I and I'm gonna say that beyond the issue of, you know, occupancy, because we don't want, you know, we don't want a bunch of unoccupied apartments. I think the issue that we've experienced here in Gallatin is that we had so many apartments come online at once that it created a huge influx of people that created, um, you know, a shift in traffic, a shift in um, honestly, retail restaurant services usage and those kinds of things that that you know, happen so quickly for us. Um, I was also spoke with Leadership Gallatin earlier today. And I was telling them, I said, I remember the days when something would get approved and it would go through, you know, twenty years of changes before it actually got built. And these days, something gets approved and a shovel hits the ground. And so, um, we've been, you know, we've been moving so fast. And so that to me is 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 a you know, the problem that I think we're all the unease that we're feeling with any more, um, multifamily rentals, because they get them built so quickly and occupied so quickly that it's a lot of peo- people, people, actual residents in our community to kind of absorb into our community at once.
Absolutely. Very good point.
Yeah.
And and also say that, uh, am I there? I like to also, I I like to also say that, uh, we have, as a realtor, we have so many, uh, people wanting to be here, and we do not have residences available because there's no inventory. So people are definitely in apartments, and they definitely want them, and they want nice ones. So they're definitely hitting them.
You said apartments, I think people are wanting them?
They do, uh, because they don't have any place to live because they're moving in from different states. There's no homes available because of inventory.
So you're saying.
I'm I'm new to this, uh, council, but I can tell you as a, um, professional, we need inventory. We need homes.
Yes, and and everybody can't afford a five acre lot with a big house on the hill. It'd be nice if they could, but you know, many people have to have a starting point. And, uh, and that's what the the meeting was about today, that some of the people said that that's how they got started in their apartment. And then it moved on further, but they just couldn't come in and go to a five acre lot and build a big house on the hill. So, yeah, there there's always gonna be a great need whether we want one or not.
Uh, Council, go ahead, Paige. I'm sorry.
I want to add add on to what, um, you know, I I know Councilwoman George certainly knows real estate and Councilman Alexander is right too. Although, if you look around at our apartments right now, I don't consider most of them affordable. But there's also a different phenomenon going on that we have never experienced in middle Tennessee, I don't think. And that is, we have people fleeing to our state from other states where they've been so burned, if you will, in the real estate market that they don't want to reinvest in a property. They want to, you know, their property taxes shot up, their property values plummeted. So they come to Tennessee and they're not willing to, even though Tennessee is a safe state in our view, they're just not gonna risk money on real estate again. And so they can have an apartment, they can lock and leave, they can go come and go wherever they want to. And they tend to be, um, frankly, more affluent people, um, my age or older. Um, and I've shared with you, I think, before also that I had a conversation with, uh, Mayor Moore from Franklin. It's now probably been a year ago. And he said that they were really experiencing another influx of apartments much like they did when they were about the size of Gallatin, and they had done a survey of their apartment dwellers. And interestingly, the average pay age, the average age of the apartment dweller in Franklin was forty-seven. So I just, I I found that just kind of an interesting thing to offer. So.
Have we had any studies lately of of
We have not. We have not, Vice Mayor Fennel, and, um, I'm gonna offer up the services of my office to, uh, attempt to do an in-depth study of who's in the apartments, where they've come from, and the average age, as the mayor's just pointed out, and, um, uh, the occupancy rate. And we'll try to get a good handle on this because I think that'll be helpful, uh, for this body to move forward. I also will encourage this body to, um, look at, uh, three articles that, uh, Dustin Shane from our planning department has written and have been adopted by Stronger Towns, which is a, um, planning organization. He's had actually aw- award-winning articles that talk about the cost of development and, uh, the upside and downside of density. And I'll send those links around to the, uh, city council tomorrow. I would encourage you to read those and and kind of get a handle on what it is that we're looking at and the cost of sprawl or more increased density as we develop.
You know, James, I've been here thirty-eight years of business. I've seen it when there was no business. And I'm happy that we've got good business now, and that's not only me. I've got a lot of other business owners that are stepping forward. They're really proud of the way that we're growing and what we have done. But it seems like what Paige was saying, it seemed like it's all come online at one time, and it's just kind of a little bit scary right there. And, uh, even though the way I vote tonight might not be the way I vote again the next time it comes around, but I I certainly wanna, uh, uh, you know, study on this on this development here a little bit more.
I have a question.
Okay.
For Eileen, are you saying that when all of these homes that we have approved get built, then the apartment dwellers are probably gonna leave the apartments and move into the homes?
No, I'm saying that we have a, uh, a lot of local people who want to move into other homes. We have people that are wanting to, uh, downsize or upsize, and we don't have the people will not list their home because they don't have a place to move to. So we have a lot of that going on. We have a lot of people that are moving in from different states that have chosen apartments until homes are either built. There's some new construction that's not available yet. New homes right now that are on that have not come out of the ground have contracts on them. So where are these people staying? There's a lot of them are in apartments.
Right.
You know, what's kind of ironic too is
John, can't hear you.
Some of the people that are moving here, uh, like want to come in here and then shut the door behind them and don't want nobody else to move in here. And you just can't do that.
Well, that's up to us to make sure that don't happen if we don't want it to happen. And, uh, we've got a few that, uh, really outspoken on that. And sometimes I'd like to ask them why they came here in the beginning. This has been advertised as gracious and growing out in for the last thirty years.
That's true, Steve. Hallelujah.
Um, if if I may, I I know there's a motion, but if if I may comment, uh, one more time, and then I'll be quiet, is to say that a couple of these concerns that have been raised, we have considered them. Um, I think one of the items that the mayor was referring to um, is is in the industry is known as renter by choice. And that is a market that has grown since the the Great Recession. Because underwriting is getting tighter on on on, you know, on on mortgages and so on. And so because people were burnt, there are more renters by choice that could go and buy that house that is in, um, the active adult portion for five hundred thousand dollars. But they choose to live in a lock and go, uh, apartment or condominium instead of that. So they're doing it by choice versus my guess is, uh, you know, much like myself, the room that I think it was Councilman Overton that was referring to today where everybody raised their hand, well, we we've all been renters, most likely, or or some of us have been renters not by choice because we had to. We couldn't afford a mortgage. But the rental rates on these units are not those types of rentals. These are renter by choice communities in a mixed use setting. The other thing I would say about overburdening, uh, roadways and and potential restaurants and businesses is that we do. and, and potential restaurants and businesses is that we do anticipate that this active adult, which essentially has a lot of time on their hands and a lot of disposable income. They are essentially living their retirement, that they will spend time in downtown Gallatin, and they will spend dollars in the shops there. And, but, most of their time will be spent within this five hundred and fifty acres, because these rooftops will translate to restaurants, sub shops, coffee shops in the MU district. And again, that's the intent of the mixed use in the emerging. It's really designed with the greenways and the sidewalk system to be a pedestrian neighborhood.
Thank you, John. We've got a motion, we got a second, we've had a long discussion right here, we got a long agenda. You guys will take a vote on this thing and, and either push it on up or?
Yes, sir, let's vote on it.
Definitely.
Roll call vote, Ms. Kitchell.
Are we doing all three together?
I, Susan, can we put all three together, push it up or down? Ms. McCauley.
For purposes of moving it on to council, you can. When you get to council and actually vote on it, I do not recommend that you vote together, take separate votes then.
So this is going to be two, three, and four right here, we're voting on either push it up to council or, or let it die. Ms. Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
No.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fennell, we have three noes and, I mean, four noes and three yeses.
Okay, guys, that pushes it up to council right there. We still got time to change our mind if we want to right there, okay?
I think Ms. Kitchell cited that wrong. Did you have, I think you said you had four noes and three yeses, but I think you had four yeses and three noes.
That's right.
The only one was Ms. George. Was that a yes or a no?
Yes.
And that's a yes?
Yes.
Okay, then that's what I had wrong. I'm sorry, Mayor.
Thank you.
So that would be four ahs and three noes.
All right, guys, let me ask you this. Would anybody like to take a break for five minutes? Y'all want to go ahead and push through this?
Keep going, keep going while we're rolling.
Okay, next one on the item agenda is item number five, Mr. McCord. And it's going to be five, six, and seven, so Mr. McCord, you got the floor.
Yes, Council, this is three items similar to the process that we entertained on the last item. This is a request for annexation plan of service and a master development plan for a project called Woods Crossing. And Woods Crossing will be located on the west side of Woods Ferry Road, a little bit south of Nichols Lane, in an area that's a, a large area that's mostly agriculture pasture. It's used, it's not in the city, and the property is partially in the city along Woods Ferry Road, and, but the bulk of it is outside the city. Again, they're asking for an annexation of the westerly portion of the property, about thirty-one of the thirty-six and a half acres, to develop the property. And I'm showing you here, the zoning on the property is actually rural residential. It used to be R forty before the county adopted a zoning resolution. The property in the city is zoned, portion is zoned R forty, so they'll be asking to change that to R eight PRD, planned residential development. The applicants intend to develop a subdivision on the property with a hundred and twenty-two single-family homes. Lot sizes would range anywhere from six thousand square feet, a little over six thousand square feet up to about thirteen thousand. There's some large, high-shaped lots that are provided, but for the most part, over six thousand square foot lots. The local street will extend off of Woods Ferry Road, and there will be stub streets to adjacent properties, which most likely will develop in a similar pattern. This will be developed by Goodall Homes, and this will be very similar to the Patterson Farm project that's underway and under construction for the last couple of years in this area. The homes would, again, here's your typical home on a generally a sixty, fifty-one foot wide home. Garage front homes, these are a little narrower perhaps than, simply because of the aperture of the photograph, but I think you get a better understanding of what those homes would look like. There will be brick to suds and hardy board siding. So the planning commission reviewed this request and recommended approval of the rezoning and annexation plan of service.
Motion to approve by Councilman Hayes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman, John D. Alexander, open for discussion. Mr. McCord, what, what was the vote? Was it unanimous vote on this project here?
I believe so.
Okay, any discussion, guys? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
There you go, guys. Now we're agenda, we're item number one. Nick Tuttle, Nick, are you there?
Yes, sir. Now, yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you got it.
I, I am here, and we are on item number eleven?
Yes.
Great. This is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for Charles Dewey's construction for the widening and repaving of Airport Road from Greve Drive to Hartsville Pike. And we have the money available for the project. We will here after the final reading of the GO bond next week. We have approximately four hundred thousand dollars in the old twenty sixteen GO bond, and then the remainder of funds that will be necessary to cover this construction project will be available in the, the road allotment of the twenty twenty-one GO bond. The low bid again was Charles Dewey's, and that was for one million and three thousand dollars, which was a little less than what we had estimated. We had estimated just over one million and one hundred thousand dollars, so we felt like we got a good competitive bid on this one.
Most approve.
We got a motion by Councilman Alexander, we got a second by Councilman Hayes, open for discussion. One thing I'd like to ask you, Mr. Tuttle, is this the same paving company that paved Brown's lane for us?
They.
Greg, you know where I'm going with this?
Rodman Boulevard, and I believe that it was Rogers Group, actually, that paved that section of Brown's Lane just recently.
He's talking about Rodman Boulevard. Who did Rodman? They messed up the concrete?
They did Rodman Boulevard, correct. Charles Dewey, this company did, did the, the paving on Rodman Boulevard.
Yeah, they were sloppy.
The, yes, sir.
That's right.
We need to have a little, you need to have a hard heart with them if you're going to let them do this.
It's still got problems, Greg.
It's, it's better.
Okay.
Working on it.
We, yeah, they did just go out and, and clean it up. I know Mr. Hayes and I talked about this yesterday, and they, they've done some work on it. I'm actually going to go review that work tomorrow morning. I think that they've got that all cleaned up. They, it's taken some time for us to get them to that point, but I believe they've, they've done what we've asked for finally.
Do we have to use them?
This company has done a lot of other projects for the city. They, they recently completed the driver's lane extension there, or Nichols Lane extension to driver's lane. They also recently completed the construction project there for the, the new traffic signal, traffic signal upgrade at Airport Road and Coles Ferry Road. And, and really on both of those projects, I felt like they did a good job. But I do agree that we, we did have an issue there on that Rodman paving job. But I think they, they finally have addressed it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna be checking it out in the morning. My guys have told me that they feel like it's in good shape.
We'll, we'll check it out.
Okay, guys, any more discussion? County Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, Nick, we'll move down to number twelve. This is about Fox and Phase Six, Section Two.
Yes, sir, this is a, a resolution to accept the infrastructure in Fox and Phase Six, Section Two. It includes a portion of Boardwalk Place and Finner Lane, and it's being recommended by our planning commission with a unanimous recommendation.
Most approve.
We got a motion, we got a motion on the floor from Councilman Alexander. We got a second from Councilwoman Love, open for discussion. Any discussion on this, guys? Seeing none, Ms. Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
All right, guys, we're moving down to number thirteen. It's about the Civic Center Pool Repairs, David Brown.
Yes, this is an ordinance asking for the re, insurance recovery fund of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fourteen cents that the insurance should go pay to have a change order for the indoor pool.
Let's cover everything, David.
Oh, I didn't see who got that first. I think it was Councilman John D. was.
No, Mr. Hayes.
Councilman Hayes, first, seconded by Councilman John D. Am I incorrect saying that?
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, properly second, open for discussion.
Will that cover everything, David? For the pool?
Hope so, but if not, we'll go back to the insurance company again. They are still digging and, and the, the pool itself now is, the, the new liner is going in, all the pool is ready. What the problem is, is the lines are going from the pool to the pump room. When they busting up the concrete, they're finding more and more problems with it. And when they found this problem, they had to dig out from under the hot tub. So the insurance covered this. I think the insurance will cover anything that we find.
Okay.
One thing, go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
That's, that's all.
One thing I wanted to say is when I went out there, it looked scary. I can tell you that. That's a major project going on out there right now.
That'll be done.
Anyone else? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Kitchell?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, moving along to item number fourteen, we got Ms. McCauley, city attorney.
Yes, this is a resolution to accept participating in the Public Entity Partners Conservation Property Grant. This is actually a reimbursement grant, so it's money that the city has actually already paid. We sent out information to our different departments. Public Works is the only department that had any potential invoices that qualified, and so they have sent us invoices in about approximately ten thousand dollars. If we participate in this grant, it's a fifty percent match, so the city could recoup up to five thousand dollars if, if our public entity partners deems all of those acceptable.
Most approve.
Second.
We got a motion by Jimmy Overton, we got a second by Councilwoman Love, open for discussion. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven i's, zero nays.
Okay, guys, moving right along on number fifteen on the agenda, Zach Wilkinson, Zach?
Yes, sir, this ordinance is a rewrite of chapter fourteen of the municipal code, which deals with solid waste. It effectively doesn't really change a lot. It's just kind of cleanup of a bunch of old language, reorganization of the chapter. And it does pull some information out of the actual code into a solid waste document that we hand out to customers when they, when they start service, but it's more kind of the day-to-day operations stuff that doesn't really have a place in the code. So it's a cleanup of the actual code. The one item that I would like everybody to consider and think about, and I'll, I'll bring it back to the next work session to discuss a little bit further in depth, is the code does establish the solid waste fee, which is twelve dollars per can per month. I've mentioned it in the last couple annual reports, that, that fee pays for all of the trash pickup and then also brush pickup. And it's, right now, it, it covers trash pickup with no, no problem. I know a lot of y'all are aware, our brush pickup, I guess, level of service is steadily declined through the years. And part, part of that's just a funding issue. As we've talked tonight about the huge amount of growth we've had, we still have the same number of brush trucks and, and brush employees that we had on the road, probably ten years ago. So especially during certain times of the year, brush does sit out for extended period of time. So the conversation, like y'all kind of be thinking about, and we'll get it more in depth at the next work session is regarding, how do we want to fund brush pickup? Are we comfortable with the existing level of service that we know is going to probably go down a little bit as we have more residences come on and customers come online? Or do we want to fund that through the general fund or fund it through this environmental services? Right, the twelve dollars per can per, per month, do we want to raise that fee to account for the additional, I guess, monies needed to, to fund a, a better brush pickup program? And it's, it's a similar conversation with recycling as well. Right now, there's cycling programs funded partially through solid waste funds utilizing personnel and equipment from those funds, and then a lot of it comes just being supplemented through our street department, which is funded through the general fund. So do we want to have established or, I guess, dedicated funding mechanism for recycling? We comfortable with the way we're doing it now? I'd like to just kind of have that conversation, and I'll, I've got some recommendations for it, but just at the next work session, be thinking about it, and I, I want to get the councils' kind of views and ideas on that before we go through with approving and, and passing the new ordinance.
Zach, one question is, I know we've done a pilot program and stuff on recycling pickup at the houses. I know we've done a pilot program or something on it. Not sure how that really turned out, to be honest with you, but have we looked any further into doing a curbside pickup, the recycling? There's a lot of people that would use it.
Yes, sir, so we never actually got the curbside program on the ground. The recycling market changed dramatically shortly after those funds. I think those funds were made available through the, it, they, we put them in the budget, and by the time the budget rolled around, there wasn't enough money to do much of a curbside program because the recycling market changed so much. So I'd actually come back after that, and we used some of those funds to fix up our drop-off center here at Public Works.
Does the market still change, or is it an opportunity for us to do it now, Zach?
A curbside program would be expensive. It, it, it will cost money. Now, we can get those numbers together. Right now, it's better than it was, for sure. Cardboard, we are getting a little money out of.
I mean, I get a lot of calls asking about that, Zach. If it's not too much trouble, could we get some numbers just to see what our potential is to do that? Because I get a lot of people ask us about recycling, especially folks that come from other places to move here that has recycling programs, they all want to do it. And I'd love to see the numbers on it, just to see if it makes sense for us to do some type of pickup recycling.
What he was going to say, Jimmy, is the only thing that you make money on now is cardboard. We have to pay to haul the glass off. We have to pay to haul plastic off. We have to pay, let's see, I think we might do okay on aluminum. But you have to pay to take most of it away now. Is that not right, Zach?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I mean, it would be, so right now, if we're charging our customers $12 a can per month for just to pick up their trash, for us to do curbside pickup, it's going to be a similar number because we can't get rid of it really any cheaper than we can solid waste because we're left in the hall it all the way down to Nashville versus actual trash. We're just taking it here in Galton. So by the time you figure it shipping and everything, it will be, it can be done, but it is an expensive proposition.
A lot of people ask about it, so I just wanted to bring that up.
I have the same feeling when people move in from out of state where our recycling is.
We're also, Mayor Brown, you're next in the queue.
I do want to say that as far as recycling goes, because I do think it's going to be cost prohibitive because of kind of the responsible recycling that we have taken very seriously. But on the positive side, I'm very proud of Zach and the department and the strides that they have made to make sure that those items that are deposited at our recycling center are actually recycled versus being landfilled. You know, particularly the glass piece, Galton has a great success story on. The volume of drop-off that has, you know, the volume of drop-off increases even month-to-month is phenomenal. So people are using it. And that, while it's not as convenient as having curbside pickup, it's certainly more cost-effective. And I think what we're going to see in the numbers is not going to make us feel like curbside is going to make sense for us. But the responsible recycling of products that are dropped off to the center is a story that we can continue to promote and tell and encourage people to use that center because we are taking care of those items and keeping them out of the landfill.
That's great.
There was a service that was in Galton, I thought it was called Gordy's. They would drop you off containers, and you could put, separate your items, and they would come by and pick it up. I don't know if that service is still in effect or not.
Yeah, there's still a few of them that do, but you have to pay for it.
There are several that do, and they have to pay for it. I would be also curious, Zach, if you're able to garner those numbers, if we could actually compare some of the private service costs? Because if we're going to turn around and have to charge our customers 12 or 15 or 20 bucks a month, if they can do it through a private service, then I don't think we want to get in the business.
Absolutely.
I don't know what the cost is of those services.
There would be a huge initial capital investment for us to be able to do curbside. It'd be a long-term.
Very costly.
Do you have, Councilman Thane would like to ask a question?
I'm just going to say, I know of two cities in Florida that are considering discontinuing the recycle service because it's gotten so expensive.
Yeah. Got anyone else who wants to ask a question?
I just will say that when I moved back here years ago, after moving around the United States, I was surprised that we didn't have a recycling program. Because almost every other place I lived did. But I understand completely the cost.
Like California?
Well, part of it was.
Well, they're broke.
Remember how over time, it's kind of been exposed to a lot of the recycling landfills?
There's a lot of movement here from California.
That's right.
Let's start on this.
Okay, guys, this is an ordinance right here. So we need to, we need to make a vote on this page?
I think. You want to go ahead, Zach?
Well, I guess before moving it on to the council meeting, I was hoping to have another work session where we can discuss a little bit more in depth on the funding options.
I'm making a motion, put it on two weeks work session. Can that be enough time, Zach?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I second.
All right, got a motion by Councilman Overton. I got a second by Councilwoman Eileen George. Any more discussion? Seeing no discussion, Ms. Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Thane.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love. And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
All right, guys, moving down to number 16. We got a monthly financial report from Ms. Nichols. Ms. Nichols?
Yes, sir. The December financial statements are in your packet. We continue to have good collections through that month. We had collected 6.6 million of our budgeted property tax, which is a little over half. So that's trending well. We should get the bulk of it before the end of this month. Water, sewer, gas, sanitation, stormwater, all of their revenues are coming in steady. So I'm very pleased with that, that COVID has not impacted our revenue collections. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know it's been a long meeting. Please feel free to email me if you have anything specific you want to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Would anyone like to ask a question right now? All right, moving on, let's go on to item number 17 on agenda. This is appointment of Rosemont board members, Mayor Brown.
Yes, thank you. We have not done this, but as Ms. McCauley reviewed the Rosemont bylaws, she felt like we should. Typically, we have had members of the council serving on the Rosemont board. For those who may not know, the city of Galton owns the property that is Rosemont, but it is run by a board. So we have historically had, I think, two members from this council. The Rosemont bylaws actually call for three representatives from the city of Galton. And so I think the third person is likely to be an employee from the city of Galton. But at this time, I'm going to ask, because it says the mayor points and the council confirms these representatives from the city of Galton. So Linda Love has been serving on the board, and Ms. Eileen George has said that she is willing to serve on the board. And so I think it'd be proper form to bring forth those two names and ask that the council move that ahead to actually go on the next meeting.
Got a motion by Councilman Overton, got a second by Councilman Overton, open for discussion. Ms. Love, is this a board my wife serves on with you also?
Yes.
I think we have too many women on this board.
Will you join it, Sean?
Need who?
You.
No, we need Councilman Overton or Councilman Alexander on it.
Let me tell you something. I've been on this board and I'll pass.
I've been on it before, too. Give somebody else a chance.
That being said, Ms. Kitchell, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Thane.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
I guess.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
You're learning, Ms. George, you're learning.
Councilman Overton.
Yeah.
It is. I didn't ask Councilwoman Love, but.
I guess, too.
All right, there you have it, guys. So now we're going to run down to, on the agenda, item number 18, about the Haven of the parking lot, Mayor Brown.
Okay, just as a reminder, this was a discussion that you guys wanted to have again on this work session. All I did was include some bullet points. These were kind of the proposed terms from the property owner. And what you all were going to discuss was whether or not to pursue this further and have Ms. High McCauley do the work to actually prepare an agreement and see if it's something that we might want to move on down the road with.
Do we, let me ask this, do we really think that we, I mean, have you looked at our lot that we have over there, like behind Joey's, I mean, during the daytime?
I think it's, it's not an issue now. My concern is the several years of construction associated with.
But I'm just, that's what I'm getting at, is, I mean, we've got that. What about the farmer's market parking lot?
I mean, there are times that it's all full, but that right now, I don't say we have a need for it right now. But.
I don't think you're going to need that much more parking to do that, so.
What's the cost of this?
It's $52,000 to pay, is the estimate from Public Works to do that paving. And probably nets us 20 spots, sometimes more, sometimes less.
Yeah. I might add, it will require a little more than paving. The existing lot is on a really steep slope, so it will require a little subgrade work as well.
So we're getting more money.
I don't know if y'all went over there.
The 52 accounts for that.
Yeah, that includes that improvement. And the reason that we're bringing it to you at this time is because it's already on the paving list to go ahead and do the paving of Inlow Road or Street or whatever it's called. And so we just happened to be over there one day. We were actually, I think we were looking at where to potentially put dumpsters or something and started looking around and thought, wonder if that could be an opportunity for public parking? So that's where that came from, and that's where we are. And so I'm bringing it to you to see where y'all might or might not wish to go.
Ms. Love, you're first.
Thank you. I drove over there, and it's, it looks like it's in bad shape to me. Now, the only time I would think we would really need it would be during those festivals on the square. And I mean, I didn't even know that parking area was over there. I would think if he wanted to do some goodwill with the city, he would open that up for parking on those festival days. And isn't the parking garage what they're going to start with? So that's on the other side of downtown anyway. And so if it's finished before they get going on the actual courthouse, then I don't know that people would be using that.
No, I am certain that the parking garage will not be completed before they start on the courthouse. At best, I think they'll start them simultaneously, which, you know, you're losing, between the Church of Christ parking lot and behind the library, you're losing a lot of parking in a minute. And this was not something that the property owner brought to us. This was something that I asked him about, and Public Works worked up the number. And I don't think parking for festivals would even be an option because that is typically not open to through traffic because you're actually in the middle of the festival if you come that far down Franklin Street. So really, my biggest interest would be for, during the time of the construction of the courthouse.
Mayor, is this something you really think we need to do?
It's hard to see into the future. I just know that we're going to have a hard time. There's not a lot of surface availability. And I thought this might be something that we could kind of have, but.
I know when this project starts, it's going to change the dynamics of downtown area.
It's going to change a lot because there's not going to be much, they're going to be, especially for you, that parking lot that we have down there, the city has, is if they use it to stony thing in or lay down parking lot or whatever, you know, they could take all that away from us or ask us to.
I see. James, are you wanting to speak? Are you just, are you passed out? Are you hacking, or what's going on?
I'm available.
Okay, are you wanting to add to this conversation?
I think one of the reasons that Galton is experiencing success is right now is that every one of you have been able to look to the future. And this is something that, it's not a guaranteed, but it is something that will be a benefit to the city in the future. We have to look to the, we have to look to the downtown area. Look what's going on down there. Look what's going on in Galton right now. And if we don't invest in things like this, this is a minor, what is it, $75,000?
$52,000.
Yeah. I mean, even if it's never fully utilized, it is a benefit to the downtown area. And that is the one thing, if you guys remember back to when we did the study on the downtown area, on the city, on the branding, that the downtown area was the biggest thing that was a benefit to the city. And we have to, we have to make sure that it remains accessible. So I think this is a great addition.
But it won't belong, it won't belong to the city, we'd just be doing the improvement. Is that correct?
And it also, I did notice, it's assignable if you do sell it, right?
Pardon me? Yeah, it's assignable, and it is a 20-year lease, and there is a graduation, there would be, in theory, a graduation schedule where they would pay us, what does he say? 5% less per year or something than?
If we vote to go ahead and get an agreement, that's just saying that, you know, we're okay with it. But I mean, for us to actually spend the money, we got to see the agreement stuff first, is that correct?
All that you would be doing at this point would be directing Ms. McCauley to go forward with drawing up an agreement. You're not committing to spending that money. You're not directing them to go ahead and do anything.
I'd like to see what kind of agreement they could draw up because I think it'd be benefit to us. I'm like.
I'll second.
Let me, let me include something.
Wait a second, guys. Jimmy Overton made a motion, it was seconded by Councilman Hayes. Now open for discussion, Councilman Thane, go ahead.
Best I recall, the parking garage is going with about $20,000 of space. If this is 20, then we're looking at $2600 of space. So that's kind of a no-brainer for me.
That was kind of the way I looked at it, too. But of course, we don't own it, and it's not a parking garage, but.
We might get a long-term lease on that.
All right.
Piece of paper, y'all, it says 20 years.
20 years.
Push it up.
It's right there, right there on the bank, yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Hayes.
You are welcome.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander, I think is gone. Councilman Thane.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
No.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays.
Whoa, how did Councilman Love vote?
She voted no.
Oh, did she? Yo, I am so sorry. I am having a hard time hearing. So Councilwoman Love was a no, so we have five eyes and one no.
Kitchell, are you going to move it up to 55 plus?
I know it, yep.
All right, guys, here we go, item number 19.
Just help me, help me, help me.
It's a CMAC mini-call update, Nick Todd.
Thank you, Councilman Fennell. Just a quick reminder of what this CMAC mini-call is. This is a call for applications for congestion mitigation, air quality grants, and only those that had previously received CMAC funds for the vehicle replacements. Those types of projects were eligible. And Zach updated just a few weeks ago about this, and we have some more information to give you tonight and really somewhat of a decision to make tonight. All looks good on our CMA, our ITS Phase Two grant application that we have. Have any issues there or any real feedback other than they do like our application? But the second application, TDOT and the federal government continued to question us and go back and forth with us, which is the Lock Four Greenway Trail application that we have. If you will recall, we set aside $1 million in the 2021 GO bond to go towards our match for that particular grant. Now, I say for that particular grant, it was left in the GO bond as Greenways, trails or sidewalks. And the assumption has been made that it could be used for this particular grant. So what we have right now is that they're really questioning us on the culvert replacement down there at the end of Lock Four, going across that little section of the lake into the wastewater treatment plant. And they're saying that that particular portion of the grant application is not eligible for this grant. And so if we want our project to move forward and we want to include some kind of culvert replacement, we would have to fund that portion of the project ourselves. And so the consultant that's been helping us with this, they're estimating that it would put our share of this particular project at about $1,220,000 instead of the $1 million that we. At about one million, two hundred and twenty thousand instead of the one million that we have available. So that's what we would be committing to if we continued. Now, I say committing to, it's that's a somewhat of a loose term because we really don't know what the final. Prices are going to be and costs are going to be with this this grant where this is. These are just high level estimates at this point in time. So that's what we believe that that we would be committing to right now. But these projects take so long to develop, and this is going to have a lot of right away acquisition on it. We could be talking about this project for another five years at least. So right now, the estimate is one million, two hundred and twenty thousand for our share. But by the time we get to the end of it, maybe a million, it could be a million and a half. We 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 don't know. So. I I I would say if we can cover all of the other expenses of this near five million dollar total project estimate. That it's still a good project to push forward with the C Mac grant application. But I just wanted to, we wanted to update you that that it does look like it was going to cost us a little bit more based on our application. And the feedback that we're getting from F H W A. But we won't really know those those costs until we get much further along in the development of the project. And so wanted to get your feedback as to whether or not you thought we should continue to press forward with this.
Absolutely, we do. It's not going to get any cheaper. We got to do this bridge. You got a lot of trucks over and about it, and and we got to get a greenway and and some, and they smoke the purpose fast. We've been working on it now for. About twelve and a half years. So it's time to move on with it, and I say let's keep rolling with it.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Thank you, Nick. All right, moving along now. That's the end of our regular agenda. So we're moving to other business. Anybody else got something to say on the other business?
John, I got one thing. Since we were talking about our our financials. And our budget, and I should have brought it up under sixteen. But Rachel just made me think about it when she was talking about that. Have we, I know when we done budgets back in in May. We decided that we were going to hold off on everybody's capital, not do anything. But then in January, February. We would discuss it. So my question to the mayor is, have we had any discussions with department heads about? What we're going to do now that our finances have come in like we think they're going to and above? Have we had any discussion with what we're going to do from now till the end of the budget?
Well, we did not eliminate all capital. We just greatly reduced a lot of our capital investment due to COVID. And my thought has been that since we're so close to getting ready to do the budget again. I I just, when I start thinking about trying to deal with two budgets right now, it becomes quite. It's going to become quite confusing and quite burdensome. I would rather, because I don't feel like we have any. Emergency needs that haven't been addressed, that have been brought forward, that we try and 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 hang in there until the next budget cycle.
I I I see your point. I I'm not disagreeing with you. I just think that. You know, police department, everything else had a lot of stuff in there in different departments. And. You know, if there's stuff we can do from now to then, and and our revenues are where they're supposed to be. I I don't see why we need to wait another six or seven months to get started on some of that stuff.
Well, while our revenues have been better than we feared they would be. I I still contend that we do not know the full fallout of COVID. I think that we will continue to see impacts. Even, you know, for for many, many months down the road and and I or years potentially. And so I. There are some things that, you know, I really want to see us do in this next budget year. But I still think we're going to have to tread carefully.
I I don't disagree with that. Okay.
All right, guys, that's another business. I got two things I'd like to say. One thing. On East Main Street, I went to Subway today. I know, I think we're doing some sewer inserts over there. That road's getting pretty rough, guys. I hope. Yeah. That's just one thing I want to point out. One thing I want to point out, too, is I had a phone. A text just a little while ago, and my wife and I noticed this. You guys hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Sean. Go ahead.
On the way to work, my wife and I noticed, plus I have a text from a citizen out here. He went to, she went to Kroger's to the management right there to tell them to try to pick up the trash out by the road.
No, you didn't call them. I've been called already. He's a night bus attendant.
Well, Craig said, did y'all want to move back to City Hall? Hey, David, you need to mute?
Sign letter saying.
Dave.
Well, I'm confused, too.
David, mute.
I'd like to see you sign that letter.
Yes, David Brown.
Hold on just a minute. They're calling me. Hold on.
Meet your computer, David. Meet your computer.
Meet your computer.
Now, there you go.
There you go. The guys, did you hear what I said? They was just talking about garbage up and down Galton Road. I hope the citizens will. Keep our city beautiful. Pick up the garbage if we can. Take care of your stuff. But I did notice some up and down Galton Road. That's all I want to say. Any other business?
I I I have, I I'll address that, Vice Mayor Fennel, because I think you'll be interested. If you haven't gotten your utility bill this month, there's a lot in there about litter. And Jeff Hinchell, Zach Wilkinson, the Galton Beautiful Committee and others have been focused on, you know, how we're going to manage this. I think Zach told me. He had two crews working pretty much full time trying to pick up trash. The next thing that we're doing, and I have it largely drafted, thanks to Mr. Hinchell, so we're going to be sending letters to all of our businesses in the community. You know, like C stores and fast food restaurants and and the the strip mall owners, that kind of thing. Asking for them to help us with the litter situation, asking them specifically to keep their properties cleaned up. And secondly, to provide trash receptacles, because if you look around, you don't see trash cans like you once did in in public space. In commercial spaces or or, you know, your your retail and restaurant spaces like you used to. So we're asking those things of them. We are talking about cleanups, how people can participate in those. And then Jeff is getting ready to launch a series of some videos about litter and. And hopefully get people tuned in and realize exactly how ridiculous it is to throw trash out.
That's right. You remember the old commercial back in the day of the Indian with the tear coming down? Thought we could put John D in one of those.
He's referenced in the newsletter, actually, this month. And then the other thing that I just wanted to bring for you, I didn't know if Mr. Fenton wanted to talk about the S I notice that we got. I thought he might.
I thought he deferred that till next time.
No, I'm glad to talk about that. There will be. Development at thirty one. And Airport Road. Thirty one and Gateway and thirty one at Highway twenty five.
Okay, are you done, Mr. Fenton?
Yes.
But but I mean, are you telling them that the notice from the state was approving those projects? I think that part was left out.
Agreed, agreed. Yeah, we have applied for that, and they've agreed to do all those improvements.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fenton. I don't think we have anything other other business anymore.
One other thing, John, I'd like to say.
Okay, jump in there.
We need to educate the citizens about this litter. One reason we see less trash cans. Is because of the abuse, the way they abused them. And me being a C store owner, I've seen a bunch of them. And it gets expensive when you're paying a dumpster bill. And so you'd be surprised at some of the things that people actually throw in those things. So the citizens need to be educated also.
Yeah, take pride in where we live. We got a great looking city. Yeah, let's move down to department heads. Department heads, anything to report? No department heads? Got one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, guys, it's been fun this evening. And y'all have a good evening.
You, y'all, too.